The mayor of the council took you up. Vinnie Miller going to Jesus Square, Councilman.
Well, Senator, we can't just even say thank you. We thank you that you love all of us and our charity and our spirit. And to that God, we say thank you. We thank you for all the jobs that you've made so that you have a president this week, that you made us come out looking like her daughter. We ask you, Father God, to touch our president and all those in leadership, Father God, put him in mind to do the right thing, Father, so that because it all goes down from the head to the body. If we start the leadership, Father God, and we get peace from the top, it will automatically go down to the city council in Balaos. And to that God, we say thank you. We lift up our new mayor, we lift up all our council members. Father God, we ask you, Stephen, whatever decision is made, let me make a yom on, Father God. We ask you to touch every decision that is made that we can live with. We can live by his, we say, we did only about, and that we say thank you. We ask you all these blessings to your son, Jesus Christ, man. Amen. Good evening.
George, I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council has had time to review minutes for the May 21st, 2020 regular meeting. I ask if there's any additions or deletions. If none, minutes are approved by acclamation. Thanks. I'm looking through for ordinance and resolutions, consideration of the requests go ahead. The city of Alhasta's purchasing policy for allowance of the federal transit administration procurement policy when spending fifty-three oh seven grant funds. Mark Barber will present. City manager, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. In order to expedite the city's severe setting funding application that we discussed last meeting, we're trying to be as proactive as we possibly can. So with that fund investment group, we're ready to move and have everything in place together. To be honest with you, we're pushing here too much faster than they're going forward with movement, but they will move to a greater pace with us so we can try to get something going here October 1st or as soon as around that date as possible. So basically, what you have up for you tonight is the FTA's purchasing policy. It's fifty-one things, as you can see, I believe, of their policy. So all we're asking of us to do is include their policies and procedures into our procurement policies and procedures. There's nothing to what we do on our local basis, only deals with the FTA regulation. Very similar to what we do for CDG and HUD. They look at our procurement procedures and we have additional ones for them. So this doesn't affect anything that we're building out. They just want to know the support is there, that we will include these policies and procedures into our ordinance, our policies. Do you have any questions?
Council? No objections, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to put forward a motion to approve this request. Answer is yes. Do I have a second? Sir. All in favor, show hands. You have this. All right, the business contracts, the bringing in expenditures, consideration of bits for replacement of store drainage pipe on Woodlon Drive. Pat Collins, sit back.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. All right, so this consideration of bits for replacement of store drainage pipe on Woodlon Drive. You know, every year, a lot of it, we just put money in, replace haulers that are carrying around, around the city. A lot of the, early on, we put in a lot of corrugated metal pipe, culverts, and eventually dropped staff. And that's what's happened over on Woodlon. We've had this in the past couple of years with some other ones, some more critical. We had, so, tonight, we put out, we did the culvert, the Woodlon Drive. We had two responses, one from Southwood Contractors, another one from Ground Break. And we're recommending tonight, if you award the low bid by Southwood Contractors in the amount of seventy-four thousand five ninety-three plus ten to ten, ten percent contingency for a total of eighty-two thousand fifty dollars and thirty cents. If you have questions, if you might have.
Pat, it says it's changing RCP pipe. Could you tell us?
Yes.
What does RCP?
Yes.
Could you tell us what that is?
Oh, I'm sorry. RCP is a reinforced concrete reply, and corrugated metal, that's what's been in there. And as we're going to replace it, all we're just putting RCP or reinforced concrete reply because they have a lot of that. Like you said.
What area of Woodlon, and I just, one of them on color, going to, where's it located?
This is located, if you were to go like on Walton and come up to the intersection of Woodlon and you take a lap and go around that curve at your head and knees, right before you get to the, the office of the park, you will have this cross over to the right that you're talking about. Leave your roadblock.
Any other questions? I hear a motion to approve the low bids submitted by Southland Contractors in about eighty-two thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. I believe that's ten percent contingency.
Thank you very much.
Second question. Second then, all in favor, show hands. You have this, thank you. Consideration of an agreement for governmental fair representation of the city of Alhasta. Our barber will present. And I will, I will state that the crew that we're considering tonight are exceptional along the way. They welcome me in any single door to say, Captain, if I want to, they give me speed, they show our city respect, they work hard for the city, and I couldn't be more impressed with Terry Coleman and this crew.
Ken, very few more, Mayor Matheson. Yeah, to know in forty-nine, it's to renew our contract with, with government solutions LLC. We entered our first contract with this company back five years ago. And it's a one-year renewal term. This year's contract, that's four thousand dollars a month, which is no increase from the, the previous year. As Mary was stating, our relationship with them over the past five years truly tremendous asset to the city of Alhasta. We're the partners of the group, Terry Coleman. He was a long time city advisor, U.S. Senator Sennon. And as we know, Terry Coleman was the previously speaker in the House, House of Representatives with Georgia. He's got tremendous connections nationwide, it's just not Georgia. So it's a good little folks. They're, it's one of the days that's right that I'm not gonna email from one of these gentlemen saying, hey, this might be an opportunity for us to get interested. Just truly, truly, it's paid off, did him big time for the city of Alhasta to partner with them. Terry Coleman is someone that loves Alhasta, truly what it is. He will, he puts us a test from their other clients to get us, hate to say it, on the bubble like that, but this is the truth. He loves Alhasta, he tries to carry out. I mean, just a little example, just a little example. The, back of us, we would have never known a thing about that. Did it really bring us any revenue to our community, no. But it didn't take a quite a life issue that we needed to help some folks get it transformed. Absolutely, Terry Coleman brought the guys from Las Vegas to Alhasta for it. So putting that building.
I think that's the process a little bit, right?
And, it's not like, you know, but it's, but it's the small things that add up the negative differences. So, just to remember, so again, I'm asking the mayor to allow me to once again contract with government solutions LLC.
You need to really mention it, there's several dozen of them. They have a state and federal.
He held our hand to the kids back in town, making sure that every pot of money that was out there was sitting in front of us all the time.
And during the COVID-19, ours, he would give us a message for, we knew what the others were gonna say before we ever catch that.
Any questions, Mark? Mr. Mayor, I think I want you to approve the renewal agreement with government solutions LLC. Thank you. Lots of seconds. Did all in favor, show hands. Local funding and requests, that comments comes back up. Consideration of a request authorized the city of Alhasta Engineering Department to apply for a Georgia Smart Community Challenge Grants and purchase equipment for upgrades to our traffic management site.
Yeah, this is actually an exciting opportunity to try to apply for a grant, to get some additional funds, to finish up the final phase in of what's an earlier investment we made. If you recall back in 2018, we spent about four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to upgrade our traffic cabinets and our TMC with the latest technology. But what this grant, if I was to apply for it, approved this evening, it will upgrade it to its fullest capacity. One of the things it's gonna do is it's going to allow us to have preemption. And in this particular, what preemption is, is as emergency vehicles are approaching the lights, the lights turn green so that they can pass safely through there. Of course, that helps with response times. Applied information, and Temple are the ones providing equipment. And if we do this grant, we will be one of the first cities in the state of Georgia outside of Atlanta, okay, that has its citywide, this system in place. And they recognize that, and they're willing to reduce the cost of the transponders from, well, it's about twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollar savings if we do that. In addition, we, we will be giving this hundred thousand dollar grant, sixty-five thousand will go to the city and thirty-five to, to Alhasta State University. And one of the things that we'll do with this is we'll work with Alhasta State and York Tech to start a program at Alhasta State for engineering technology and transportation. Some of the students are gonna come over and they're gonna start working and learning more about it. One of the things that they're also trying to accomplish with this is help get educated, talented people into the workforce, that's a part of it, those that maintain these systems. So we'll be doing that, along with that, we'll do some research. The, the neat stuff about this system that you purchased is it's gonna have, the grant system will be upgraded so that it has be able to be able, and be able to infrastructure communication. So if you download the travel safety app on your phone, it will play through your Bluetooth. It will allow us to put things on there, like you're in a school zone, you're in a school zone, you're speeding, you're in instructions of that type of thing. Also, while you're in practice, it should be able to tell whether the lights are gonna change, you're gonna be able to tell whether other vehicles are coming up on you and that type of thing. So it's not only good for just traditional vehicles, it's good for pedestrians, it's good for runners, that type of thing. What you really need about it, too, is the systems communicate with each other. And while it knows how the cars are, it can actually make adjustments with traffic, traffic type. So, I mean, this is really high-tech stuff. The new Ford vehicles that come out from 2021 will automatically be able to communicate with every one of our hundred and twenty-eight traffic signals that we put this in. So anyways, so tonight, there's one change, and I decided not to make it because it's going in the right direction and sending out into the general. But we're asking you tonight to authorize the purchase of the equipment, a hundred and forty-five thousand eight eighty-two and twenty-four cents rather than a hundred and seven. So, so what we're asking you tonight is to go ahead and allow us to, go backstage, I'm sorry, authorize the engineering department to apply for the grant funding and then to approve the purchase of the equipment from Temple for a total project cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand eight eighty-two twenty-four. Are there any questions that you might have?
And now sixty-five thousand gonna come, I mean, this grant program towards the person who?
Yeah, what will happen is when the sixty-five thousand that we get out of the grant, that's gonna knock that price down. So that we're only spending eighty thousand, sorry, I had that eye surgery, eighty thousand eight eighty-two twenty-four.
Okay, we've had some discussions about this, about this kind of year in particular, concerning about Asher passing right down the time with my diversity, which one's coming through. So I, I got some good things, but we got, how many contractors we got?
Hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay, so this system, this system gonna apply to, gonna be?
Yes, sir.
Take on all of them?
Yes, sir.
And therefore, our diversity vehicles, drive, ambulance, and whatever, come through there and get the light where they can keep.
Yes, sir. When they have a transmitter installed, okay? So there is some equipment that, that has to be purchased for different types of vehicles to use it. And this particular program, we're buying ten of them, which will handle all the fire trucks.
Okay, my down. The fire department, the police department, the shared department, it's that group, they're all over them, you're saying mercy, you, what are you talking about? You thought you were talking code giving?
I'm saying that the signals, no, okay? I mean, you said, the signals will be prepared to do that. There's gotta be a transmitter.
And get caught.
And those transmitter meters can be installed by anybody who opts into the program.
Well, what do you think, what, what, what do the transmitter costs per unit?
About twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Per unit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I mean, I think it's a good thing what you're talking about, but we just need to be clear and understand what it is, and you're looking for one thing, you know, and you told, you've got to make sure you, you, you right there. So that's not, it was a whole lot of money, and what you're saying, what we talk about there is.
What we're, what we're doing is, 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 just to be clear, okay? Is it's going to energize, I'll say, all hundred and twenty-eight signals so that it's capable to use this. So this, so it has this capability of preemption that you're talking about. And of course, the new Ford vehicle won't be able to preempt, but they'll also be able to talk to, to, you know, to it. So anybody who downloads the app, the, the application, it's kind of like the Waze app that anybody uses that, they'll be able to do it. As far as emergency vehicles, right now, with this purchase, ten of our fire trucks will be able to use it. That's the only one that's off.
And you can add to it, don't you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You know, why you wanna make sure that you can, because we have stuff these damn times over here that would give you more money.
Right.
Than what you're saying, yeah. Also, there's two parts to this thing.
Right.
Thank you.
One of the fact is, is the mayor's preemption.
We knew that was gonna happen.
We're going out for the ice dinner, right?
What am I gonna do about twenty-nine hundred?
That's it, we're gonna look, look you in the bud, you know?
So with, so with this grant here, we get ten of them at a discount of twenty-nine hundred. Yes, sir. At this point, we need to buy some for a place in Amity that will receive this discount. How much you have to pay to serve us? Probably, probably the normal price is forty-nine, why not, if we were able to be, I'm gonna, we'll talk to them.
They, they participated with us, Temple did, because, not so many are exactly right. This has been a systematic process over the years. The most expensive part, you guys have already done with the teams installations that you have had to do over the years. So that was the biggest part of it. This has introduced the next phase of interdiction and more face-to-face interaction with the public. They, Temple is our sole provider for that, for those devices. So they were so excited about us participating in this type of grant for the university, that's how we arrived at this guy, because he's about double that, if I'm not mistaken. So to answer your question, if we can roll in another grant, they may participate. So, but we would definitely try to negotiate, but if we can't, definitely take my guess, they would just have me to participate in this grant process with us and at least get a start. Because it's a win-win for us, because, you know, we're all seeing it about Georgia Smart Cities. This will put us on the map, like Pat said, we can first met a city in South, out of Metro area that has anything like this, every intersection everybody have. So they get a little recognition, too, from it, so they're getting some exposure. So we definitely need to add on our negotiations as we act.
Now, the main, the main one, you give it in the fire department and, 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 and ambulance.
That's right. That's why we started that, so we had a question.
Ambulance, you know, whoever operating that system, operating, you know, they're one who will be responsible for, personally, the shared department, and they would have to be, we're not going to be, you know, front of the line.
That's all right. And that's, maybe standard fire department, work out the legislation, there's always gonna be something with technology. Work it out. And then, I think, the annual services and things like that, maybe, we were too mad. That way, we don't have, you know, fifty of them running around and there's problems with that. We're working on those relationships as we get.
So just. I can get an app to put it on my phone, because I'm a speeder.
I'm wearing glasses.
She will be giving me, you know, she's not, you know, in a speed, in a school zone, I can get that app. And that's who say our people leadership one of the kids is, is who's a correct? I just threw it out.
Or, or, I just want to let them get your attention.
Oh, who knows? I'm kidding, kidding.
Any other questions?
Just to be clear, now, other, Princess Falls County, they can use this system that have, use of it, they have transmitter for their vehicles. So their fire trucks come through, they have a transmitter, their transmitter could talk to the system.
Right, if anyone wants to sign them on for that, you can. We have control over New Long.
Okay.
We like the cameras.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying that anybody who has a transmitter can do that. And so we'll, we'll have to make about it, is a transmitter, keep in mind, this is about traffic and transport. But if they pay for it, you'll have to, if they pay for a transmitter, that's fine. That's fine, but what I'm saying is, we're also gonna have to make sure that we're, that we look at when and.
Well, it's gonna be designed to work within the city of Alhasta, as far as the culverts and all that, so we just have to explain things.
They won't work on their accounting bikes, just in the city.
We have city bikes that they can run through, I don't even run through, but you don't even. She doesn't wear a mask, no, or a transmitter that is systemed with that?
No, it's just, just like there's no, like on your Waze or something, whoever's got it, you know, can talk to it. It's just each of our intersection, transmitting this information.
Any other questions? I have a motion to do two things. Authorize the engineering department to apply for the grant funding and approve the purchase of equipment from Temple for a total project cost of one hundred and forty-five thousand eight eighty-two twenty-four.
Seven, Mayor.
Second. All in favor, show hands. You have this, thank you. That's exciting. We'll move on to citizens to be heard, Mark Barber will come back up and send a couple of emails that went submitted to the, for citizens to be heard portion. Mark?
As you know, since we've been doing the live streaming and the videos are up to the public, in order to be, the citizens to be heard, we're trying to help them, but we allow citizens to email in some of their input they would like us to do. So what we'll do, if I read it like I did the last time, and we do, we normally do with a live person up here, we don't, of course, follow the person up here, outsend them a letter, address, and all their issues and concerns. So the first email we got is from Lisa Baptiste, I believe, on the apps in the right. We received this money June the eighth. As a concern, citizen, what measures are in place to prevent what happened to George Floyd, what happened here in Alhasta? Now, I'll expand a little bit more on that when I get to my city manager comment portion of it, but again, we will respond, this chairman will respond to this, to this Baptiste. Our second one, we received June the eleventh. Hello, I'm writing to see about these concerns, any interest, permanent commissioners meeting. Just I'm weird as a rabbit, so I'm waiting how it was tied together to us. What open release policies are being reviewed for reform to protect black people from being killed? Number two, unnecessary force like the chokehold slash strangulation tactic, the element due to act when force becomes unnecessary and no knockout warrant should be looked at are these on your radar? Number three, will the education budget be advised to include more pay for educators considering they will be doing more work to accommodate for the increased workload due to the COVID pandemic? Five, raise the minimum wage. Next, what is being done to review the Kendrick Johnson case? And lastly, when will the Confederate monument at the old courthouse be taken down, respectfully here as Eric Johnson? As you can tell, a bit of that list will not be a safe responses, as they're not ours to respond to. So those are the two public comments we have for this.
And before you move on, Chris Overton, do you want to be stopped, either the responses or the, or the, or the, otherwise we have to still work. Mark, do you do city manager's report, please? Come back up?
I can, all right. Okay, you know, we've been doing the drop-off recycling, we started with the different areas. This one, the traffic congestion over here at the customer service center, Park Hall, which is too great, because, you know, people are still being required to come through the drive-through. So that drive-through traffic, and the way that we had to reroute the traffic in order to, to keep that from stretching out to Lee Street and Act Street on the other side, we moved back to, what street is it?
Leeds and Matt.
Leeds and Matt? Leeds and Matt, and a lot that we all have behind our, our, to kind of make sure our locations and that, so that we got as close, like, like we talked about, the first time I ever tried to place those containers on properties that we own, so that was the closest and that's property that we did on. Again, that's the one we're very glad we're having a lot of folks participate with that. We still have folks that would like to see the other come back with, as of now, you know, I would say, I think, sixty-nine days out, that's not gonna be a consideration at this point in time to bring back the curtsies, especially if we're rolling COVID cases now.
Just a quick thing on the drop-off sites, I did have someone that hurt themselves from the railing on the step-ups. Yeah, where, you know, the only thing that's kind of right. But maybe we can do something.
What's location?
Part, part one, we got. But I'm sure it's the same with all the others, it's what I would do.
We'll, we'll check them on, absolutely. Now, some vehicles assigned to all three locations, now we got those done, and they look really nice to, to let us know that this is where you can do the drop-off recycling. So it took us a little while to get a design, and get a make of it, they're out there now, it's about a little bit of a problem. I wanted to remind you that the thirty day local comment period for our CDG cooperate ends tomorrow, Friday, June twelve. So if any of you want to respond, not that so as we get, your time is drawing very close. I don't think we've had those responses, to be honest with you, we didn't want. But the last day for that comment period is tomorrow.
Well, I'm, you mentioned, so, and the Blue Dog and this technology and, and, and territory and co-ism, without a lot of people in our community don't have that, and not really, isn't it? So, you know, so we, we need to use accommodation thing to get best that I do.
I agree, and I said, we did use that, but, but as far as public commenting, you could, you could have come in in person. But again, I think the COVID virus has inhibited some of that participation, you know, that's why we said, okay, let's use technology for those who get the one, and based on virus. So I think that's why it hit me some, but there were multiple different ways, including in-person, paper copies that, that people could have gotten a picture of that they could show.
I'm, I'm preferring to, well, we kind of go to the, we're about to serve the issue, right? We see to, we, we need to move up with the plans to, to let them know about it after all that.
I agree, I agree, absolutely. And if you could have some, what, and, and. I agree, absolutely, exactly, and if you can have some, what, you know, news, which you know, there's circulation, there's down, but, you know, a lot of folks will take it, and then the, the, the delivery time is different now they change that structure, so it's, it's kind of making it difficult trying to get everybody, you know, what they're looking at, we have to, we need to.
Sorry, radio, it's, that's right, I mean, we got, I remember, we got a radio station , it's.
Free? No, no, we have fifteen.
Yeah, we said, oh, he's kind of finished up, public care, he's got thirty sitting here, but he's not free. Public, public comment period is all where you're special, yes, absolutely, we won't continue with that.
Uh, free because you can't purchase it. It's not, it's not legal.
Then this Saturday will be the first time that we're gonna attempt to get back to some of the small city, we're gonna open back the downtown window to Baker's, uh, the Baker's Market this weekend, it's not gonna be in traditional location around the courthouse, we're gonna move it over here to our, our city lot, where the food truck event happens, that spacing, a lot of the there around that, our vendors still understand that they have a space, a little ran it in such a way that the, the folks, the folks participating, the vendors will be socially distanced as well, so we're gonna see how it works and open that back up. This Saturday, nine AM, one PM. You got your budget earlier this, this week, again, just based on our conversation last meeting, if you got questions, just please tell me, we'll set up meetings, you know, there's several on coming at one time, that's a very good, happy to set up, so long we prepare that twenty-four hour appearance on the starting three. I did want to mention one other thing on the transit system, you know, last time we spoke, there was a public, a public hearing section, again, with that, we had nobody this first fourteen days request anything, so the rest of additional, many public hearing portion, that being the Tuesday, so with that portion, so with that, for that part. One of the things I mentioned during the agenda was that we are really rapidly here, but what the city said, yeah, D O T is having to jump on board with us, that they're having, they're quite used to living, and it's right in place, but they're trying very hard to keep up with it. One thing that S is not to do, is not to distribute the R Q for the transit service to its lot first, that's when they had down our contract again, but I think they were erroneous in that, but that's one thing we have agreed to do, so we'll look at it two week timeframe difference, when we distribute the R Qs, we have agreed to that, so that R Q will not go out to the lot first.
We're gonna be looking, we're gonna be looking.
That's right, that's right, yeah, that's right, but our contract, that was a little bit different, just the way we had to jump into this real quick in the lines county, said they were not funding past January first, we had a little different situation, but this year, it all worked out well, so the progress will not hinder our process, because that's why, again, we're dealing with, like we discussed earlier today on the agenda, so we can be at every game when that time comes. And also, I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about some of the events that's in our community here for the last four, nationwide, the last few weeks, and specifically more communication and how we communicate public safety, specifically police type of items and issues to our public. I think everything, we're not perfect, I think there's always room for improvement, so one of the things I want to let you know, Mike, that Leslie and I have been working on, and it only came to life during the last few weeks, we need a consistent message of work we're getting on our public, what I'm giving you, it does need to be a one-on-one conversation, I didn't give you a book that says, here's how you become a police officer in the city of Austin, this is what you got to do, psychological training, all of those bills, how we keep trained, how, like, Miss Jones settled, I don't know, Miss T settled her email, what training that we did here in our community with our police department, so that doesn't happen here, so we want to put that down detail by detail, I can frankly ask questions, type of thing, the Republicans don't mind, our topics to distribute, so we're finishing that up, let's just get it, we're gonna condense it out, because she's got a lot as well, that's too much, but I did want to let you know, that really, that really caught our attention, and we're gonna expedite that process to get that distributed, that way everybody's that, everybody's in the same, saying that, they're receiving the same message, there's no, there's no rumors about it, there's no, it is what it is, we're gonna put your heart talking in front of you for you again, for all of us. Then along with that, one of the things that came out of the, the committee walls, which have been, I think we've had five this fall, fantastic, we've had great positive reviews about our committee walls, one of the things that did come out of that, though, is that we have been talking about through the virus, putting together a group of citizens, though other may be, I'm not that far into it, but I just wanted to share it with you, but what we wanted to change from what has happened in the past with some of these committees, we don't want the same folks on the committee this bill, these type of committees, the same people, we don't want politicians on the committee, we don't want upcoming aspirational politicians on this committee, we want the down, or person that Leslie's going in there going shaking hands and saying, Chief Man, let me tell you what's wrong on my street right now, that's who we want on these committees, not the same folks, and so, we're gonna be doing that, so one thing I'm bringing up tonight, because I want you to think about, because we're gonna ask you to make that selection for what we're talking about. Again, I can't go talk much of the details that we're still working out, but I want that to be your selection for us, whether it's in your district or not, I'll leave that up to you guys, but we won't put together a group to, number one, help us with what we just talked about, some distribution of these type of materials, because we've got to be careful, because it's lesson I went through trying to come up with some ideas for this group, a lot of it steps on your toes, honestly, because you're the elected leadership for your district, so we don't want to put a group in charge of things that may be, steps on your toes, I'm just gonna leave it at that, so we're still, we're still inventing that, I think it's a great idea, we're just trying to figure out what it's gonna be, you know, if it's, if it's a, I think one, one maybe called citizens advocacy or citizens review, but if this group is put together just to review cases that, all right, as we all know, this group's gonna go before, because we don't have that situation in our community, so they're not gonna have a lot to look at and review, so we want to make it, you know, we can have fifty committees listed under the police department, but if they're just there for name's sake, and say we got fifty, we're going to have one back. I'd rather have three good ones that are out in our community doing what they were designing for, so that's our goal, that's what we're trying to do, so break it up, just so you guys can be thinking of somebody that you'd like to.
How many would you really?
There'll be one for each of you guys, we want to keep it small, because you begin to lose a little effect with some of the committee when it grows, so we're gonna, but let me say, we're still, we're still the advocacy of this list, so if we get it together, and you say we maybe, maybe move with eight, we're difficult, but right now, but what we're trying to do, we'd like just one representative for each of you.
I'd like, I'd like to come in, my, my, my daughter, my friend, and, and I share a little bit, you know, concept with you, when we, when we look at what happened in there kind of, this thing happened, I said, thank God it's not here, and, um, my, my third son, we end up, um, we have all, we had, maybe we had one or two little just, we asked, we asked the police department, they, they, they beat all things, and, and you know, they trained to, to enforce the law, um, but, but my friend, you, you, you got the reminding apart, and the training, and kind of, you understand how to escalate a, a, a situation, or some of these situations they run upon, you know, they involve blood, you got, you know, you're not responding negative, and, and be patient, and know how to, go ahead and handle it, so we just need to, to make sure that, that, that the chief is, is consistent, teach you, we teach you how you handle a situation, you know, so, you know, I think those things that they do, that they should be moved off.
Right, absolutely, and that's why we think this will be a first step of these questions, that, that, that folks, that's, we can talk exactly about the training, and then we have to, we have to move on to the other layer, the escalation training, these guys did, and we're a, to be an organization, there's another level of training, our training counts, even if you guys wanted it to, and, and y'all's are people that have funded their travel budget, they gotta do it, because if not, we lose our credibility, so the majority of our training budget, city block, is, please, we want to put that kind of thing in writing so folks actually will know about that.
And, and the other thing, and, and I know over time, individuals, matter of fact, this week I seen people make their police officers that we had, with him, he was the last named owner, but, but I, I remember that he passed, I seen him pay for two days to hold up, so we know the, the, the police department, we used to know, I remember the police said, buy, buy that, buy that, pass, and, and, uh, flowers, and Davis, and, you know, and, and they, and they know, and they know the community, and, and, and we had, I've had some great good basketballs on the police force from, from black community, and, and they were ready, I said, black police officer, now that concerning me.
Sure.
And, um, we, we need, one of the best things we can have, and then have, and have a good cross system of our community, so, but, but, you know, so I don't know what to say, I, I, I know the chief in the past, some that, that worked on this, and, and city manager, like I said, that made that progress, and, and, but, over time, you know, they, they die, or they retire, or they, they retire, so, so, we, we, we need to make sure our police project is, is doing occasionally, right?
Absolutely, we're getting, again, that's a whole project for us, and I think about this time last year, we discussed that, we, we ramped up our recruiting, we changed our patent, we tried to make it, uh, a little more appealing, we hit all the traditional African American colors when we do the group, we're trying to, to do exactly what you're doing. One thing I will say, last year, as you know, we never had a, a, a break, and ninety-six percent of folks that, that stay out of the police department, what's they did better, we got that, this last year, we got that, so that's an improvement, we'll continue to make the police department as diverse as possible, unfortunately, this year, we had some folks that ended up that are no longer on the police force, for whatever reason happened, so that was a big killer for us, just to be honest with you, if I can say that, so we're working very, very, very well, aware of the issue, we continue to work.
One of the citizens who acts at the county jail, which we house people, they're, we, it's on the phone, and there's some Indians there, and, and over half of those Indians that are African Americans, and it's, it's as if our people are being targeted to be arrested and harassed and served, and there's some kind of, Chief is doing a great job, not, not the chief, that's, that's, that's it all, but I'm trying to figure out how we can negotiate on this, this, being, everything now is being South American, what is that saying, is that, being a police officer myself, I'd be tired and tired and, and doing a lot of, a lot of.
That's a natural assumption, just based on the numbers I can tell you, but, you know, I can do this then before you come on the team, that's not the case with the city of Austin, that's what I can do, I understand that's a assumption, right? I'll tell you one thing we did do, if you know, probably two, three years ago, you guys let us take some of the smaller crimes and not take them to jail, let's take them out of the, that favor, I think that's helped a lot, so we're trying to always find those kind of things to keep that, so that record's not there, that haunts anybody the rest of the time, but for me to tell you that, all I can say tonight is, that is absolutely not the objective of the city of Austin's department.
Well, I, I get a little bit of this, and Eric did something earlier last week, so we're gonna be, be coming out and support our B P D and our chief, and just for us to say it, you know, we're proud of what you did with the chief.
We didn't say he was my partner, she's my superstar, all I asked a question about the campus, and we never, never turned our back, we, because I think she's great, she we could have, because she moved that Saturday with, with the protest, she came out in the rain, this was our people, we're not knocking the chief.
No, you could ask people any good question, but I just, I felt like it's time for us to be able to say that we are a hundred percent behind Chief Penny and our team at B P D, and what they do is a difficult job, and.
Did you like that, that, I'm gonna counsel there, however, counsel them again, or reaching out to each one of us individually and asking if, if we would lend our support in our name, or let her equal out the support of our chief, of course, and every single council person responded, she on a yes, so she, she walked in, began with our full support and backed the council, this is, this is how we defend this town, and Chief Penny.
And she interacted with every person that left her turn, she interacted with, she did not leave until the last person, that's, took the issue, she, she might be on, being chief, because she could have assigned other officers to do her job, and she stayed there.
All that, one more thing, it's great to have our department that's back in person, and nice to look out and see their face, just as always, it's nice to have them looking forward to the citizens, we welcome back, building council in July as well, we're also welcome to the budget here in the three o'clock, and, 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 Mark, thank you for your guidance.
I, I, of course. It's funny, I was just imagining, when you say we had ninety-six percent retention of police force there, ninety-six percent, we have that, because our, that's, you know, ninety-six, ninety-six percent of our retention of our police force, because I'm just, I think that the ratio is, we got ninety-six percent, and I've been able to observe a few incidents, they've always been white officers who come to a situation, and a black hair, get not one, and I can tell you, I know about at least ten, every time there was a white officer, it's okay because it never came in crime, but you're saying, we got ninety-six percent retention, and every time we had an extent, I go there, and white hair, or something, it was always stunned by white officers, we're pretty much ninety-six percent white.
That's, that's not true, this is not, I mean, that's not the ratio on the, I'll get that for you, I have that for nation, I'm just saying, we have a lot more we, in the past, we've built, we've had our, with this local police department, we had ninety-six percent retention regardless of race, gender, or anything, we got folks who want to stay with us, and you're absolutely right, that goes back to, we do, there's no doubt, we know, we have a problem recruiting African American adults, especially in our switch market, we know that, we've worked on it for years, and we're gonna continue to work on it, but it's difficult if you got an emergency, you know, to ask for a certain gender police officer, or a certain ethnic group, respond, you know, we gotta respond to these exact places, I live for you, so, I hate you think that way, that's, that's what we can do right now, but I will, we, you know, that's a problem, absolutely, we do have a problem addressed, recruiting African, I didn't want to get here, we, we're right out there staying, we had a good recruiting class last year, I'll tell you that, much better on the gender side as well as the race side, so you'll start seeing it, if that happened overnight, and folks are moving up the, the chain of, of that ladder succession, so we'll, I understand exactly what you're saying.
My other thing, when you say like, we recruit a lot of the officers and so forth like this, that, I know we, we got to have certain standards, we have to have certain standards, right, we have to recruit officers, because I know certain things, you have to look at, and I, I swear, I don't know, I think maybe there's one that I, I would like to see, I just want, um, definitely on a, on a basis, like this would affect the requirements that you just have for them, because I was, it's just one way, sometimes, you know, you want to get a service when you're a survey, you want to get certain information, you go on a certain area, you got certain criteria, you want to get just certain. You got certain criteria, you want to get just certain people. All I'm saying is I just like to see just what our department's doing, how, how we can do it.
Yeah, I think you got order, but that's exactly the, the, the token I'm talking about. That's exactly what's going to get here on the requirements, so she got to lead to be the servant for our Austin Public.
It went with training. I know we had some, I went to the foresight in the county. I went to foresight and all the top line training, but we did training in-house. That when we knew how to de-escalate, we knew how the officers, if, if officer was, when it was too hyper, we knew how to get in the hallway and put it up and then to stop it, but we doing that.
I know, yeah, we just don't train once. We just don't have the foresight, pretend, and it's, it's continual. We do have a training division in-house, but you know what? It's best to combine them two. We got it in-house, we also go to office, what other folks are doing, we're getting the, we're getting that, the collegiate, the, the, the.
That's the thing that we did.
Yeah, so we're getting, that's constant, that's constant.
When, when you do that officer test, once they get that bad joint, and the joint will get, get going, they will give to the officers, they become human. And that's why I was asking that, that is in-house training, showing them that how to de-escalate and get to a point.
That's, that's, that's all we have to do, that's, that's on the other side. Where we're going to the National Credit Classic and see what other communities are doing and get those classes back. That's, that's really important for us. And we absolutely do that with areas, regardless of where, whatever their appropriate training is, is what they get. We'll tell you, we got city manager board in front of, I think we started that back again. You'll see, speaking of training, just so there's no rumors out there, there's not a lot of training for the police department. Not that, that area, because COVID shut the class gap, so there was not a place.
But I can speak for my district, every time I see a police officer today, I can observe, they're very respectful. And I have not seen one talk to anyone out of this, out of this, out of this. And I worked, and said to them, they didn't take it, but I did, I just asked about the training.
Absolutely. And our message is this to the community, we are not perfect, and therefore we know that. But we're not going to stop working. We're not going to, we're never going to satisfy everybody in this community. We're not going to stop. We're going to continue. I think really one of the, I think it's a testament to our community, the reason things have to happen here. Obviously, in other communities, we're believing in some of that. We've had a very peaceful protest here, and that's, that's how it should be. And I think had it been otherwise, to an extreme otherwise, you might have seen a different story. But I think that's a testament to, to our, to our community and to the police department.
One is, she, she may go away, the people got, the certain areas got a chance to see the chief. Because they wanted to see her, and they wanted to get to know her, and they wanted to trust her. And she had done that.
Yeah, it's, it's been great. That is, I think one of the best programs ever. The simplest thing, like I said earlier, or sometimes the most pathetic, just to knock on somebody's door and say, hey, I'm chief requesting, man, man, how can I help you? It'd be, that chief enjoyed going with the fire chief with it too, and I got to the fire chief.
We just wanted to warn the public in this area, we wanted to, with the chief.
That was us, we're, yes, ma'am.
Although we had opened the city back there, you, you, now you, you opened that to the wall, get a press card, too many of us drop on, and get blocked out. You, 18 cars. Right, it's, it's time for us, it's time for us to open, from that back there.
Well, 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 you know, this, uh, you could take, huh? You could take, well, the day we got it.
I thought it was a pull-up.
You could take this day, Monday, Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, so right now, you can go in and, and you can do everything, but you can put your money and drop lots out there for that. We have surge and folks taking, that's technology paying online. And then the next step is to, I dropped it.
We, we, we didn't open that up, back from going up, and we had kind of enough timing. But there were a lot of issues that, that you need to do over there. We just need to go ahead and go back this up, that's open.
Well, this was our face again approach. Open the building, you can go to the building, disconnecting account, opening account, buy business license. There's nothing you should go in. But the majority of those folks that go into the building are folks paying the bills. So you got the folks opening and closing. I mean, and it's a small building, yeah. I mean, we will have, we, we got sometimes lines out the front door. So we decided we wanted to phase back in, and then after June 15th, we will open and let folks come back in.
Wait, so after June 15th, so then we can do the 16th?
Well, we're about on the June 16th.
Okay, we, we did.
Got that extended, we'll open that up. Again, we got the protective gear, we got the sneeze guards and all this stuff, and very positions and stuff. So like I said, we can try to phase everything in.
Well, we'll be opening doors in the city hall, because...
City hall doors open right now.
People that can't tell, because they, you got to close walls. People arrive out of here and there.
Yeah, that's just for delivery. So we're saying this out here, that's what we got, city hall's going to...
I understand what you're saying, but people think it's closed because they arrived last evening. Because I, my sidebar was there, closed, and it was open. I came, we went back there, because there's all the shoots on the door. We take those down, people will start coming in. Also, when they get to coming into the question, we did, and, and do the distances and et cetera.
Yeah, as my master said earlier, the reason we haven't had a public hearing here is because we haven't had anything publicly. Like a zoning issue, nothing public hearing wise. So the budget is a public hearing.
Can we provide workshops?
So...
Work sessions?
Work sessions.
Yeah, I'm getting that for you. So the, the, the budget hearing will be open to public. They can come here, and we'll be prepared to space out accordingly. Now, you know, traditionally, we don't have a lot of audience for that, but by some chance this year we did. It could be we have to limit the number here because we are going to practice social distancing, but I don't think that's going to be an issue.
We know it is.
So I think most had one time, it was 30 folks, and if somebody was getting extra credit in a class of the issue, they kind of listened to us talk again. Most of them saw it most of the time, actually, so they had extra credit. Then July, beginning of July, we're going to phase back in, everything's open. July is dead right now, there's still no zoning, zoning issues for the first, for July of August. But we can go back to work sessions, and that's why we have these work sessions. It's where we talk about all those zoning things, everybody basically gets real. But we'll go back to our traditional method of meetings.
What about Matthews and Bill and my husband, if you can answer it? They may go to, do their...
We're going after that 16th, we'll go back and get back into our normal. Still with the social distancing, some things like, we'll be getting back to the old system.
For the next two or three years, we got to, we got to have a new concept. And, 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 and so we, we not going to get rid, and, and we don't have to come back to this thing. But if we get a vaccine, it, it's, it's something going on, right? And, and we, we count, and it's, it's obviously good, and practical, but we, 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 we got to open that up.
That was an amazing city municipal support.
Yes, I liked it. I wish I'd done that.
Maybe a council will come in, but I just wanted to question about the fact that when I heard him talk about him, and driving home, and he said that somebody was leaving home, well, they got 20 percent, they didn't have any. And one, one thing I was going to ask about that, I did, that you go up and talk to him about it, is in any kind of way, because I've seen the situation right here, right here, this parking lot, where we could put a little note up, you might have talked to our lawyer out there, at your own risk or something like that, when they walk up on those stairs. Because I did see somebody with two bags walking up there. We always wondered if it's any way possible that if we could put something up there, because that would be something we might want.
I agree with that. I agree with you, so that's okay, because there's a reason why we put it on our own property, to have some event that could happen that way.
And also, we can't run our city council meeting by the county commissioners one day, council meeting. It's like when we sit up here, everybody's just into a herd. But every time they go to vote, and when they vote for them, they knock on the door, and they're in a herd. But when we sit up in here, you can see them, they watch, and go on and on. But we got to stop doing that, because this is not happening, too many sessions. This is exciting.
Yes, ma'am.
We're far more excited than the county committees.
One more thing, Nancy. We will talk about the C D, C B, C E G P. And the last, the last thing to make the comment is tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there any kind of way that there can be an extension now or something like that?
No, not with others, not. But if somebody were going to give us something a little later, we would take it globally and turn it around. We can always talk to our other representative, but it, it would go into the actual documents of local hearings.
Okay.
I see Julie T had asked, have, have something over there, you know, probably, do you ever respond to them? Beverly, Dr. Beverly Blair?
Yes, maybe asked, maybe asked for the multi-purpose.
No, they, they were on the park street.
She asked for the park, and I sent her all the emails, and she sent me, and my response. I was really concerned about the rise in our community of 19. However, however, I'm about to say this, but however, we made contact with Ms. Beverly, and we're going to... She said there's about 200 folks there, she's going to use it, we're going to vote a lot. Just like we did for the March this weekend, a lot will be voted, place trash cans out there for her. It's going to be a movie event, they've got a big screen and a ton of folks. So we just, just like we asked the organizers of the March last, we're going to ask them, please keep yourself socially distanced, it's your responsibility to do so. So then we have an event next Friday, six, 10.
So the training here, we won't be held responsible?
That's not, I might, this is June 19th, next Friday, which is Friday 6, 10, I believe. And it won't be four hour program. They left them like an hour for setup and an hour for...
Aren't you just having, sitting pool club back over there?
Oh, yeah.
All right, I heard you sitting in the drinking booth.
That's, that's, that's one that we used to have around the courthouse, we'll be back over there this time. So she is, we did, but I just, one of the ones I'm concerned about, like you just said, the next two or three years, people may not like our rules, but if you're going to use our spot, space for election, but like I said, common sense, and some of the time individual responsibilities have to come into play, so we're going to have proof of it.
Mark, thank you. There can't possibly be any council budgets.
I have one. I want to say thank you for participating in March last Saturday. We entered, you were great, and you interacted every time. And you, everybody's talking about what a tremendous person you are, and what a great presentation you gave to the public. And I want to say thank you, thank you so much.
We just got finished talking about the budget. And I want everyone to pay attention to what's going on. There's going to be some cuts that will have to be made, but what we can do to, to help offset some of it, is fill out our census paperwork, because our numbers are down. And then, and it's federal government will help us offset some of these costs, some of these losses. So people, please, be mindful, take your time, fill out your census paperwork. Because it, it helps us, it helps our surrounding counties, we're a hub city. So the more, the more people we get to participate in the census, the better off we are.
What's the, what's the last table, October?
August 2nd. August 2nd.
October 30th.
They send you, you know, today's date, August 2nd is what I know.
August 2nd is when they started, you were...
Any other council members?
Yes, to make a motion to appear.
All right. All right.